Twenty-three Auburn Main Planning Board meeting. I will start to my left with roll call.
Tim DeRoche.
David Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Evan Seer.
Amanda Garette.
Riley Bergeron.
Excellent, so I see that we have two full members who are absent today. So to that end, we will elevate one associate member, and I believe at this point in time, it is Tim. Excellent.
It is.
I can do two. Oh, I will also elevate Amanda as well. Thank you. Okay, so the second item on the agenda are the minutes. So we will actually be reviewing the minutes on May ninth, twenty-twenty-three. So we'll be moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is a site plan review with public hearing. This is for the Auburn Suburban Baseball Softball, new development ball field, which is located on Stevens Mills, adjacent to Garfield Road and Hotel Road, and I will hand it over to staff.
Thank you. This is the Auburn Suburban Baseball and Softball. It's a nonprofit youth sports organization serving essentially Auburn. Nationally, the league is chartered by Cal Ripken Baseball, and it affords the ability to expand baseball to the scope of the state, local, and national level play. Just kind of a little overview there. The road, the project itself is consisted of three baseball fields. One is a, kind of like the Major League Baseball field, and then the other is two Little League or softball fields, and those are off Stevens Mills Road. The site is currently under, would be under the site law and stormwater law, and will have a traffic movement permit. There's four parking areas, up to one-hundred-and-thirty-four vehicles, that will meet the parking demand of using two fields simultaneously. A concession building with bathroom facilities located at the front of the facility, along with maintenance and garage storage. These facilities will be served by private subsurface wastewater systems and a public water supply. In the application, they have applied for, they have shown that there's adequate soils for a subsurface wastewater system. Portable bathrooms will be served the facilities temporarily with the fluctuation and high use demand. The scope of work, which is going to be done in conjunction with the Maine Army National Guard, they've got some volunteer uses. I don't know if anybody, if the board understands that the current ball fields today, where they're at, they're actually located on federal property. That's how Eric and I originally met. We did in two thousand and fourteen, when I was the master planner at the Maine Army National Guard, we did the joint land use study that identified this, you know, kind of a user conflict between the park and the guardsmen training on the weekends. And then, when you mix in the kids with the ball fields, you know, that could potentially be, you know, a dangerous situation where you've got engineers coming onto a site with big vehicles, and then, you know, it's coinciding with Little League Baseball. It's, you know, it's a concerning situation, and we all identified that as a need for a new location, and the suburban Little League was fortunate enough, by the time I got here, had acquired a piece of land, and now they're developing the land. The biggest piece about this project is the traffic. And I guess the concern about traffic, there's some wetlands on the site, but they're minimizing the amount of wetlands down, you know, fifteen thousand square feet or below. But the traffic movement permit, they're going to generate enough traffic here between a hundred and two hundred trips, it's going to generate a traffic movement permit. So with that being said, there's some very specific items that came out here, and it's in the staff suggestions as the requirement of that traffic movement permit. No parking along Stevens Mills Road. We don't want conflicts with, you know, people walking in the road and then people parking in the road, so we just want to leave that area clear. And then, stop bar on Stevens Mills Road, Hotel Road, so the site distance there is not the best. The traffic engineer is suggesting that as an improvement to include the stop bar, and then including some tree clearing on the corner of Stevens Mills and Hotel Road. And then again, when we talk about peak times for the traffic itself, we're limiting playing time to two fields at one time. So those will be, that's what staff is suggesting for conditions on this permit.
Okay, do we have an applicant?
How you doing? My name's Evan Jones, the Jones Associates. So I think staff did a pretty good job.
Yeah, I was just going to say, do you mind speaking in?
I think staff did a pretty good job of summarizing the project. If you didn't hear me the first time, my name's Evan Jones, Jones Associates. So, as staff said, there's some wetland impacts with this site. All of those impacts have already been permitted through the Army Corps and DEP, through an NRPA Tier One, as well as a permit by rule. Through comments from staff, we've increased parking on-site, as well as we've left space for a future footpath from Hotel Road. There's not currently any sidewalks on Hotel Road or Stevens Mills Road, so that opens up to the opportunity for a footpath from Hotel Road to the project site and the use of possibly the fair property in the future, if there are any parking issues on-site. I can address any questions from the board.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
I have one. You mentioned that there were changes given feedback for parking spots. I guess one of the questions that I had was, how do we, how was it determined that there wasn't sufficient parking for two games to be done at once?
So the, what we looked at for parking for this project was the parking that they currently have on their, at their current facility, which parks around one-hundred-and-twenty cars, and that utilizes even more ball fields than this site would utilize. I think you're using four fields over there currently, so there would only be two fields used on this site. The other number that we looked at is the parking generation number from the Transportation Engineers Manual, which is sixty-two. Just over sixty-two parking spots per field. So in total, that number is one-hundred-and-twenty-four parking spots, and we're at one-hundred-and-thirty-four parking spots, so we're ten parking spots over what the Traffic Engineers Manual calls for, as well as being over and above what the current Auburn Suburban site utilizes.
I do know for, as a baseball mom, that currently, there are a lot of people that park on the side road and are working on Stevens Mill or Hotel Road. Limiting two fields playing at a time? I know that we do have less kids playing baseball and softball, but is that going to be adequate enough for the kids that are playing?
The parking that we're proposing for two fields, yeah, that, and that is part of the reason why we're limiting the two fields, is this site is space restrictive, so we can only fit a certain amount of parking on-site. And the parking that we're fitting on-site exceeds what a traffic requirement would be for two fields. If we were to utilize three fields, it would then exceed two of the parking.
I saw in the document, and I heard from Mr. Blay, that parking would be prohibited on Stevens Mill. Does that prohibition also extend to Hotel Road?
Currently, we're only proposing no parking signs. I don't know if this is working any better. Currently, we're only proposing no parking signs on Stevens Mills Road, so that would be all the way from the intersection of Stevens Mills and Hotel, past the project site to the west. I think that that could be, I don't think there's any issue with restricting parking on Hotel as well.
Mr. Trask just, he and I are looking at two separate documents that actually give two separate parking prohibitions, and we're just trying to figure out which one's accurate. The one he has says three-hundred-and-fifty feet from Stevens Mill, including Hotel Road. The one I have does not say that.
Yeah, so there was a, there's two, there was two, there was a revision on that, and that, that should be, the traffic movement permit is also requesting that there's no parking on Stevens Mills Road as well, for the first three-hundred feet. I'm sorry, Hotel Road, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right, so seeing none, we'll open up the staff. Do you guys have any questions for staff?
Yeah, so what's the proposal for making sure that there is no parking along Stevens Mills or the three-hundred-foot site distance on Hotel?
So the, it's going to, parking is typically enforced by the police department, so, and then it's going to have to be a project that's done in conjunction with the police department and Public Works. They'll have to post, they'll have to post the road prior to the field coming online. I think that's, that's the intent right now.
So there are no physical barriers, no boulders or anything like that proposed along the roadway?
No, there isn't.
Will that also limit the ability for homeowners potentially across the street from leveraging parking on the street as well? So basically, the street would be blocked, or did it only be blocked during, when games were active?
I think the road's going to be posted at all times. There's not going to be any delineation of times or specific to the baseball field. That's something that is a detail that maybe could be worked out with the local police, but as of right now, it's just going to be no parking along that route.
And so we're talking about limiting play to two fields at a time. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. It sounded, the obvious one was parking, right? But then staff earlier alluded to traffic, and so is traffic also part of the concern for limiting it to two games at a time, or is it primarily the parking?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, so the traffic movement permit is based on, the peak hour trips is based on only operating two fields at one time, so that's tied to the traffic movement permit. That will be a condition of approval for the traffic movement permit, and I just wanted to make sure that the planning board understood that that's tied to that, and it should, I would recommend that that be a condition of the approval for the site plan.
Yeah, and I read the traffic study, and I think that's outlined in the study as well, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, I thought that, okay. Any other questions?
I have one. Personally, and I think those that may travel that area frequently know that Hotel Road in that specific area has a tendency to be a very high-speed traveled road, well above posted speed limits. My primary concern is, given that fact, and that specific intersection is starting to take on a reputation of being tricky for line of sight, for speeds traveled, I personally would love to see someone consider speed deterrence, whether it be speed bumps or whatever on Hotel Road. I would hate to think that any of the players, the families, or spectators either getting to the game through that intersection or leaving the game through that intersection fall victim to excessive speed, and unfortunately, that road does have that problem, and my primary concern in this entire application is the safety of the kids, and from my perspective, that plays a role in the whole decision-making for me anyways. Some kind of speed deterrent, has that been considered?
So that would take additional traffic study to study that section of the road. I can say that they are going to look, so because it's a rural area, the state has to post the speed limits on those roads, the city actually doesn't have any authority on those specific roads. Even Stevens Mills Road, it's posted as twenty-five, but they, when we had to look at site distance, we have to go back to the original approval from Maine DOT. It didn't go through the proper channels to actually be posted at twenty-five. They just, you know, someone, you know, a bunch of years ago just posted it, they didn't go through the proper channels to do that. We had to look at that road as a thirty-five mile-an-hour zone for site distance. Getting back to your original question, same thing applies there for Hotel Road. So, once the, once the ball fields are in play, I think we're going to take that back to the state, and we're going to do an analysis on those roads, and that will be included. In addition to that, and again, I apologize for, there was two versions of that, but the first three-hundred feet, and that's all about no parking out there on Hotel Road, and that's all about site distance, right? So if we get vehicles that are right up against the roadway, that site distance is not there. So if we, if we push the vehicles back three-hundred feet, we really, we really maintain that site distance for that intersection. So that, that's the key to success right now, that is, again, part of the traffic movement permit and addressing your concerns. To do any other feature would take additional studies outside the scope of this project.
Yeah, so when I look at current day Auburn Suburban and the field, it's off of Garfield. So when you come out of the ball field, you go straight, and you have a choice to either go down Stevens Mills or take, you know, go down Garfield. If we, one, if it moves to this new site, people leave and they have a choice to go left or right. So you're taking the same population who has to, you know, either go straight, you know, or take, you're kind of dividing it up, right? So it's, to me, it seems almost a better traffic pattern there than it is current day, in my mind, when I look at it.
I would say that's a fair assessment.
Any other questions?
One last for me. The recommendation is that we limit playing on two fields at one time, and I guess the question that I would have is, you know, other than just, you know, how do we monitor for that, and how do we say, hey, there's suddenly not a pickup game on the third field that people wanted to participate in, or we now have extra cars, or, I guess I'm curious if we suggest and recommend that that's in there as part of the condition, like what occurs or what happens if that doesn't happen?
You know, I think that, well, there'll be visually something that happens. I think if you're going to have another activity going on in that location, I think we may run into parking situation. We, you know, I think it'll expand, and it'll be real evident real quick that it's showing parking on Stevens Mills, or parking along Hotel down three-hundred feet from the intersection. It's going to be evident by that, and at that point, it's, you know, then it's our responsibility, coenforcement, under the site plan review process, to, you know, address the Little League Board with that, with that issue. I don't think that they're in the position to, I think they're going to pretty well, you know, self-control themselves and the board. I think there's a lot of responsible people that are on the Auburn Suburban Little League Board, who, by the way, when I played Little League, beat me three times, but I won't say that out loud ever again, but it's just, I think they'll, they're really, they're going to patrol themselves and make sure that that doesn't happen. We don't want to, they don't want to get a, you know, especially starting off here for the first few years, you got to, you got to work out the kinks and figure it out, but the operational piece, I think, should be real tight in the first couple of years, and staff will be looking at it, and will, you know, will address things, and Public Works will help out, and police will help out when they need to.
And these aren't the only fields they're utilizing, they're still utilizing their properties into Auburn as well, correct?
Yes.
All right, and I think the new Auburn fields are just for mainly practices.
Yeah, I know that's how they've been used. There was, when they, the first year they acquired them, they used, T-ball was over there, they did baseball over there, but I'm wondering if, as part of this, they recognize that they can utilize those fields if they can only play two here, games here, you know, they can certainly play games on their other two baseball fields as well.
Okay. All right, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, so from a public standpoint, if you would like to come and address the board, you can come to the podium, you have five minutes, and when you do come to the podium, just state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Simpson, I'm actually in Abada. I'm probably the closest product to the ball field. I'm sure you all know who I am. First of all, I'd like to start with, we probably couldn't get better neighbors than a ball field, particularly the Auburn Suburban. Great neighbors, it's going to be used for so many other reasons, it's not, and we're really happy about that. However, it does come with some concerns, and some of our concerns are indicative of the use, and one of them is noise. We're very concerned about noise. We have a zoning for noise in this particular area, our zoning is seven to seven, so we can only transmit noise from seven to seven, and we can't leave it to set. How will this be controlled? Be on seven o'clock at night? And the second thing is light pollution. As in Abada, we do enjoy our backyard, we have a very private secluded yard. Looking at that map, those lights will be shining right towards our house. How are we going to control light pollution? And lastly, it's a concern, and I don't even know that it's mine to address, but I understand that once the building permit, once a permit is issued, there's eighteen months in order to complete the project, is that correct? If so, are we prepared with funding? This, you're entering into what is a two, three million dollar project, and with an eighteen-month stopwatch, that's a lot of money to raise in eighteen months. And the last thing I'd like to bring up is, obviously, you're well within a lot of wetlands. Are you prepared, as of all fields, to deal with pesticide issues and fertilizer issues because of wetlands? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to come and address the board? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Okay, so at this point in time, from a public hearing standpoint, we can address any questions that were brought forth. I know that we all heard them. I know we all wrote them down, so I'll just open it up to see who wants to start.
How does the city enforce its noise ordinance?
We do have a noise ordinance. Mr. Simpson's correct that there is an exemption for noises between seven AM and seven PM. If the noises at the property line rose to a level that exceeded what the noise ordinance allows, those noises would be measured at the property line, and then we'd work with the property owner to find ways to mitigate those. I think, you know, there are times certainly at a ball field with kids cheering or spectators that the noise could exceed the standard. Hopefully, that would occur between seven AM and seven PM, and not after seven PM, but we do have a way to measure noise and to control it if we need to after those hours.
So if there are complaints from Abada, does the city has the equipment to actually go out and measure those things at the line themselves?
Yep, and I think Mr. Simpson's property here at the southern side of the ball fields has a relatively good wooded buffer between the ball fields and the property line, especially for these front fields, but obviously, they're close to Stevens Mills Road. It would be this rear field, I think, that would be the closest to the property line.
As far as light pollution goes, it's my understanding that these are cutoff lights?
That's correct, yeah. I believe it's their musco lighting, which is, yes, one-hundred percent cutoff lights. So the, there shouldn't be any distribution of light outside the actual ball field itself in the perimeter for just accessing in and out of the site.
Mr. Simpson asked a question about timeline for completion. Can you explain timelines for completion?
Yeah, the eighteen months is essentially a timeline that we watch. They, in addition to the eighteen months, they could come back to planning board and based on their conditions, or, you know, as, it could be a materials issue, it could be a materials timing, they have to document it and then come back to planning board for approval to get it another, another year extension. So there is the ability to do that, to come back and to notify the public that their project is not going to be completed in a timely fashion.
It's my understanding that the groundwork, though, is being done by the Army Corps of Engineers, correct? So I would assume that, I would assume that they're using guardsmen, and that, that means they're going to be on a pretty tight timeline themselves for their training to get things done, and that they'll get that done.
Yeah, so we actually had a, kind of a pre-meeting to kind of go over what the scope of the work would be. They're planning on doing it during their annual training, so it's going to be intense for the fourteen days or so that they're going to be out there. They're going to try to do all the, you know, the grading, subgrading, stumping, getting all the subgrades ready for the ball fields. They'll also install, the plan is that they're going to install all the temporary BMPs, so all the silt fence that's required for the site, or mulch, those are a couple of different options, all that will be installed by the guard. So they're going to, they're going to prep the site. It will be, you know, it's, I think it's important that we pass the information on between the seven to seven. It may have been mentioned, but I don't think that it was really made sure to brought to light to them, so we would want to, we want them to stay in there within that seven to seven construction timeframe.
Mr. Simpson brought up a really good point about the pesticides and fertilizers. Does the developer or the city have any BMPs in place regarding that throughout the duration if this project is approved?
And, consultant, you want to, Evan?
So currently, the stormwater for these sites is actually designed for all three fields to be artificial turf, which from a stormwater standpoint is actually the worst case scenario because it puts off the most, oh, sorry, it puts off the most amount of stormwater. So, any of the stormwater coming off from those fields goes through treatment soil, underdrained soil filters.
So to understand you correctly, the AstroTurf won't require fertilizer and pesticide, correct?
That, that's correct.
Thank you.
Excellent, any other questions? Excellent. Any other questions?
I have a question. The three hundred foot, was that limited in scope simply because that's what was in the, the traffic plan? I, I ask only because it's, it's likely three hundred and fifty, I apologize.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I, I would not think it unlikely that people would start parking wherever it is that, that limit ends. And if we're looking on Hotel Road, that actually puts Mr. Simpson's lot kind of right in the, the line of fire as far as the possibility of people parking, attempting to park in front of a private residence. So I'm, I'm wondering why that was limited to, if that was limited simply because that's what was discussed on the traffic report.
Yeah, that was what was discussed. It was really about site distance. There wasn't consideration for parking along the roadway in front of a, you know, in front of a residence.
Okay, any other questions? And any deliberation amongst the board? Any thoughts?
Is there any way to protect the residents from people parking out front of their homes where they've had open roadway previously?
There, there isn't really any provisions to, to protect that. I mean, you could, you could make a recommendation, it could be a contingent to extend that further. But, you know, we, we park along the, there's parking along the roadway throughout the city. So it's not something that we typically consider as staff for parking in front of a particular residence. As long as you have the proper amount of shoulder there and road width, you know, it's a, it's a pretty common practice.
Yeah, I was just thinking that because current day, there's limited parking in the current ball fields, and people do park along Garfield Road in front of residential houses. So the question would be, how often do you guys get complaints from those residents saying that people are parking in front of their house?
I don't get any complaints, but I don't know, Eric?
Yeah, I, I don't think I fielded any. I think the traffic movement permit will require no parking for the three hundred and fifty feet. There's no reason why the board couldn't ask for that to be extended.
Okay.
Or make that a condition of approval.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, I'm trying to think about the shoulder on Hotel at that area. And while I don't, you know, keep an eagle eye out for it, it seems to me that the shoulder is narrower there than the shoulder along Garfield Road. I know the, along the shoulder on Garfield Road, people can actually take their car entirely off the road, and I'm not sure that's, that would be possible.
Yeah, the Hotel Road shoulder is narrow and soft.
Yeah, I think our, our sense was that the three hundred and fifty would be enough to deter parking on Hotel Road. But if it had to go further, that's certainly an option.
Do we have the ability to say no parking along Hotel Road for the purposes of accessing the ballpark? Or, or do we, it doesn't have to be a blanket, just, just no parking?
I think it's gotta be a blanket, you know, thing. It's, it would be hard for public safety to enforce that.
Also, there is enough shoulder, it looks like twenty-five foot yard setback from the two fields that are tied together from kids hitting into Stevens Mill Road. Is that correct?
Say that again?
Just with the kids hitting from either one of these two fields that are right next to each other, is there enough buffrage for the kids not to exceed the field and hit into the road?
That, that's a hard thing, you know.
Let's quantify that.
I've seen some twelve-year-olds.
Then they're going to the.
It, it looks like a softball, it's a softball field at what appears to be a minors field. It's very rare to get kind of out of the park home runs with either one of those.
That was part of the consideration of the orientation of the fields. It was thought that foul balls would be more likely than home runs, unfortunately. The, the field orientation was taken into consideration with that.
I mean, there's some big hits now.
That's actually a good point. That, that was our suggestion by our city engineer to turn the, the fields. We actually had them turn the other way, and, and they did think that the foul ball would be more prevalent than the homerun, the giant homerun, so.
Is, is there a wall or is it just, just grayed out? Or like, is there any deterrent to fencing of any kind of anything once you hit that end?
Yeah, there is, so there is a fence, there is fencing proposed in the ball field. In addition to that, our public safety looked at that, and we've got fencing that will open on the top. So we'll have emergency access that'll come through Stevens Mills Road. That was another reason why we didn't have parking along Stevens Mills, that to maintain that access, you know, in, in the event that a player got hurt, we could access the fields, so.
Eric, you were showing Hotel Road just a minute ago. Where does three hundred and fifty feet end in either direction? Is that easy to measure?
Yeah, I know, and I know on the, the staff review as well as the traffic engineers, the goal was not to have parking beyond the three hundred and fifty feet, but there was a consensus that they thought that distance would be enough to deter parking on Hotel Road. We certainly don't want parking to start at three hundred and fifty feet and continue to, to mine it, Evan. So here's right around, right around three fifty. Zoom out a little bit to see that compared to... I mean, if it, if it was to continue along the entire frontage of the ball field property, that would be about eight hundred feet.
I think that's a much better deterrent, actually. I don't think three hundred and fifty feet would do it, uh, being a parent of a softball player. Pretty willing to park anywhere, so.
All right, ended the discussion. Any other questions?
Well, I guess, so are you saying that you think eight hundred feet would be a better condition of the traffic permit?
I was just gonna say along the, the entire, the lot line, the entire, to extend to the end of the lot line, but.
North and south of Stevens Mill?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, because I'm assuming we're going three fifty in both directions. What's, what's to... How, how far does eight hundred feet take you, Eric, if you go? So that essentially brings you to the next, essentially the next house yard, yeah. Good catch, Tim.
I think that's a really good recommendation. Last thing I have, would it, I assume it wouldn't be problematic for the city to post signs on Hotel Road and Stevens Mill cautioning drivers that they're entering an area where there's Little League baseball played, fields, active fields, watch for players, watch for families, things along those lines?
I, I think that, that's something that, you know, Public Works could work with Auburn Suburban Little League on kind of how they want to, you know, portray that. I know that they do have a, they have a field, they have a sign right now that says, you know, "Coming Soon" is the new field. Maybe that might be a good location for, you know, Auburn Suburban Little League sign that essentially, you know, warns folks that this is, this type of facilities at this location might be something they could consider at some point.
Possibly a children playing sign, something like that that alerts drivers.
All right, any other questions, comments? If not, I'll seek a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the site plan for the proposed Auburn Suburban and softball fields, citing that the project, with the findings, that the project meets the requirements of Chapter sixty, Article four, Division five, suburban residence district, Chapter sixty, Article sixteen, Division three, special exception, and Chapter sixty, Article sixteen, Division two, site plan review with the following conditions, that no development activity take place until any bonding or inspection fees are determined by the Auburn Engineer Department, that there be an approved traffic movement permit, that there be no parking along Stevens Mills Road or along Hotel Road for a distance of eight hundred feet in either direction of the intersection of Stevens Mills and Hotel, that a stop bar be installed at, on Stevens Mills and Hotel Road, that tree clearing on the corner of Stevens Mills Road and Hotel Road take place to allow for adequate site distance, and that play be limited to use of only two fields at one time.
Do you have a second?
All right, just one comment. You used the word "or" between Stevens Mills Road or Hotel Road for the first eight hundred feet. We want that permit to be an "and," correct?
If it was not understood as a both, then yes. I will amend that to say "and."
Second is?
All right, any discussion? I think we just had it. I didn't catch it, though. Sorry. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a site plan review and a public hearing. Jim Wu is proposing the development of a two, two-billing, twenty-one-unit apartment complex with parking on the one point two-two acre site at four oh five Center Street. So I will hand it over to staff.
Thank you. Jim Wu is proposing the development. Jim Corbren is here on his behalf from Teradyne Consultants, proposing the development of two buildings at four oh five Center Street. One of them would be ten two-bedroom apartments, the second would be eleven two-bedroom apartments. The site formerly had a mixed-use building on it. It is located in the general business district, which allows both commercial uses as well as residential. We've listed the extensive materials provided as part of the staff report. The application came in preliminarily back in January for a start of a staff-level review, and then was submitted in its final form on February tenth. And this application was delayed in part due to a snowstorm last month. The building that was on the site was damaged by fire, and the water needed to put out the fire. The project did have to work with the elevation constraints on the site, and has some retaining walls used through the property to help work through those grades. Hoping to get you the plan here. This is the site as it existed with the prior building before the fire that happened last year. And then this is the site as proposed with the new buildings. All parking, entry and egress will meet the grade requirements and ADA requirements. The plan includes thirty-three parking spaces. That includes two ADA-compliant accessible spaces. And a sidewalk will be constructed on the south side of Building One, which will connect to the sidewalk on the eastern, easterly side of Center Street. The apartments will be served by public water, sewer and natural gas, as well as underground power. A new six-inch water line will connect to the existing twelve-inch water main in Center Street. A new manhole will be added to Center Street to allow a connection of an eight-inch gravity sewer line to the existing eighteen-inch line that's located in Center Street. And new ground-mounted transformers will be installed, one for each building, for the electrical service. The applicant is proposing less impervious area than was previously at the property, allowing for more stormwater to be absorbed. And the remaining stormwater will be stored and drained into Center Street's stormwater system from a catch basin and runoff from a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm event can be stored in the filter strips along the edges of the building for roof runoff. We did have peer and staff reviews. The applicant addressed comments showing the two-foot retaining wall on the plan by adding the existing front retaining wall just off the street to the grading plan. The applicant addressed a comment to include a five-foot clearance from the pole to the wall at the southern end of the retaining wall by adding a dimension. What we were able to do as part of this project, we did have an existing sidewalk on Center Street, but the retaining wall at the front of the site, as well as the utility poles, made the sidewalk too narrow to meet current standards and didn't always allow for the sidewalk plow to pass by. So the grading of their site will improve that, so it is able to be maintained year-round. The applicant addressed a concern about snow storage. The storage areas are east of the emergency vehicle turnaround, so that will work year-round for the emergency turnaround. And the applicant addressed another staff comment that the turnaround must be kept clear by placing no parking signs at that location. Staff believes the proposal meets the requirements of Chapter sixty, Article four, Division twelve, general business. The proposal is a permitted use in the district, does not exceed the density allowed in the district. It also meets Chapter sixty, Article sixteen, site plan review, and meets conditions one through four of that section. Staff recommends approval of the project with simply the condition that no development occur until bonding and inspection fees through the engineering department are, are in place. With that, happy to answer any questions.
What was the previous use?
So the previous use changed a bit over time. There was a doctor's office, I believe a dentist's office for a number of years.
It was oral surgery. He retired several years ago.
And then after that, it was a mix of commercial uses, like salon, day spa-type uses, as well as residential units in the building. But it was a mix since the doctor's surgery office. Then owned by Jim Wu and used over the years to, for housing and small commercial uses.
So this property isn't a new acquisition for the applicant. It's originally owned by the applicant looking to do something different with the property, correct?
Yes, and it was heavily damaged by fire and ultimately was not worth rehabbing the building.
There were currently people living in this, these apartments when it was on, when it caught on fire, correct?
Yes, there were, yeah.
And this would replace some of their homes?
This would replace those homes and, and add some to it.
Would there be any rent controlled or anything?
No, the, the applicant hasn't asked for any assistance, and these would be purely market rate rentals with no, no restrictions on rent. I guess it's possible he could pursue some kind of funding resource that came with rent restrictions, but as far as I know, they have no intent to do that.
Super great. Do we have the applicant to come forward?
Good evening, I'm Jim Corbren with Teradyne Consultants here in Be-
Here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Can you hear me well at all? Okay. Thank you, Eric. One of the challenges to this site for the existing conditions with the existing structure there, the proposed driveway entrance is at the same location as the existing driveway entrance. Just to the south was the retaining wall that Eric spoke about. It was roughly a 5-to-6-foot-tall retaining wall there. To improve grading and site distance, we propose to lower that wall to 2 feet, approximately 2, 2 and 1/2 feet. So the same wall will remain, it'll just be lowered. That'll get our site distance for turning out left or right down from, or up from, about 67 feet right now to over 350 feet. Buildings themselves are are 43 feet wide by 110 feet deep. And the parking allowed does exceed the minimum requirement. And right here is a good example of the telephone pole on the southerly, southerly end of the site, where there is existing sidewalk, and that retaining wall that goes between the two. We removed the retaining wall in that section, add a little paving, and that should allow for room for the sidewalks to allow to get by. In addition to the available snow storage space just off to the west of the emergency turnaround, there's also snow storage space between the, on either side of the dumpster, on the top side of the parking lot, as well as to the north of the property. Various spots there. By altering the retaining walls there, none of the retaining walls themselves will be over 7 feet. More aesthetically pleasing. Better for landscaping and views for the tenants. And also a safer situation there. So you don't have one retaining wall that's 16 feet tall. But that was our biggest challenge with the site, was the elevation change. Aside from that, do you have any questions?
Just a clarification. You said to the west of the turnaround? Did you mean to the east of the emergency vehicle turnaround?
To the west. There's no room to the east because of retaining wall.
Eric, can you go back?
Unless you, I suppose you could lift the snow.
No, it's like, I was saying to the, to the west is a... Okay, what you're saying is, so you're gonna plow all the way through that turnaround? Sort of to the southwest? Yeah, yeah, that'll be cleared, okay. I was thinking directly to the west, and I'm thinking there's a, there's actually a walkway right there. So, I don't, okay. Thank you. I knew I needed to talk it out.
What's, what's the sight line looking right out of the parking lot, out of your pulling onto the road?
Oh geez, I, much better than it is looking left currently. Yeah.
Would there be any blasting for this, for the second building?
No, we don't believe so. We, we did some, we didn't go down deeper than 7 feet, but we did do some soil evaluations. Did not find ledge. The soil maps also don't indicate that we would.
If this project was not approved, what would the owner do with the building that has been like it has been for the past year plus?
The building was torn down last month. It was raised last month due to its damage and safety concerns. It wasn't, wasn't, yeah.
Okay, any other, oh, go ahead.
Going from what I've seen in your site plans and your schematics, correct me if I'm wrong, and it's just because I'm bringing it up because it seems to be a reasonable analog. These buildings in the property appear that they would have the look and feel similar to what we see occurring at Stable Ridge loosely. Is that accurate?
I would, yes, I would say loosely. These are, these will have to be more custom buildings due to those dimensions there. I believe the ones at Stable Ridge are more of a standard width of 60 to 67.
I understand that they're more rectangular, but the look and the feel, the fit and the finish is gonna be similar to what we see at Stable Ridge.
I believe so, yes.
I think even more similar to what you see behind the site that's being proposed.
At the commons back there.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, excellent. So I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so same standards apply. You can come to the podium. Five minutes. State your name and your address. All right, seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, perfect. All those in favor? Great, okay. So at this point in time, I think we can have a discussion, deliberation, also entertain a motion. The floor is yours.
Why'd you look at me? Actually, I, I think this is a really great repurposing of the property. I was happy to see the, the vegetative plan, like, really filled out, too. You know, they weren't really skimping on trying to make sure that they're, making sure they've got those visual buffers in place, and so. I was happy to see that they're utilizing the same curb cut. It was nice that they're making improvements to actually increase visible sight lines. I, I thought that this was a good, good way to use this property.
I agree.
That being said, I would actually propose that we approve the development of a two-building, 21-unit apartment complex with parking on the 1.22 acre site of 405 Center Street, parcel ID 271-065 pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 12, general business district, and Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, site plan review, with the following conditions: that no development until any bonded or inspection fees are determined by the Auburn Engineering Department.
Okay, just to clarify, you're making a motion, right? Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, none. Motion carries. All right. So this next item is a special exception, site plan review and a public hearing. For Isabel Prey is proposing adding an outdoor, right, outdoor walk-up window used to the existing business at 41 Stevens Mills Road, which I think you're going to go into is a property that provides smoothies. So I will hand it over to staff.
So this is a project that came before the board, I think, a year or more ago. It's been a while now. The primary use is Prime 360 Fitness. It's an existing business. They have a smoothie shop within the building. They have a window that could be used for takeout. And we've talked, I think, over the years about at what point should we require a special exception? And we've kind of kept with the standard and the ordinance that anytime that there's takeout or drive-up service, that it rises above a restaurant and becomes a special exception warrant, warranting review by the board. Nothing physically will change if you've been by the site, noticed it. Everything is really in place for them to be able to serve smoothies that they currently sell within the building to customers of Prime 360 Fitness. This would simply allow them to serve customers in sort of a drive-in, carry-out form through that outside window. It's not the same as far as scope and traffic as a true drive-up facility like a Dunkin' Donuts. We really don't anticipate any significant change in traffic. So staff's reviewed it, and we believe that it can meet the requirements, a special exception. Parking is available on the site primarily. They still anticipate to serve the customers that are there for another purpose as well, but they would be able to serve smoothies at the takeout window. Staff's recommendation is that the board could approve the project as meeting the requirements of Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 13, as well as the special exception requirements and site plan review requirements. One condition that'll be addressed with them through a building plumbing permit is that they do need to make sure that the bathrooms that are available to the customers of the fitness business or another bathroom is available to the smoothie shop customer should somebody want to use it. With that, answer any questions?
To clarify, Eric, this would be, this, it's an existing window, no changes to the building. Just to clarify, this window currently faces the parking lot of the facility, not a window facing Court Street?
Yes, that's, that's correct. In this area where you see this sort of darker paving, there's a takeout window facing that, that access point to the sidewalk in front of the building.
Do they have a bathroom, or is something where they'd have to get permission to use the fitness center's bathroom?
The, as far as I know, the businesses share a bathroom right now, the smoothie spot in the fitness center, but that may be something that they can answer. I know that there, there is a bathroom designed for public use at the building that the customers can get to. We just need to ensure that they don't prohibit that.
You mentioned that you felt that there was adequate parking. Is there parking currently allowed in that spot of Center, Court Street, rather, if for some reason there was overflow?
I don't know the answer to that. Let's see.
Is it the question about overflow?
It looks like there's like 13 parking spots, right?
Within the parking lot, there's...
Right, I was just thinking that if there's existing activities being done, you know, and suddenly there's a boon for smoothies, you know, where if there is a need to park somewhere else, I'm just curious as to...
Yeah, and then I would just ask the same question around that, though, because right across it, there's other restaurants, and I wonder if there are equivalent parking? Do you know what I'm saying, for, if that makes sense?
To Sam's across the road or some of the other restaurants.
And like DQ, right, and I don't know how many parking spots they have.
DQ also, DQ also has a traditional drive-through lane, though, for pickup orders. I understand what Dave's saying, because if people were tempted to park on Stevens Mill Road, should that park, on Court Street, should that parking lot become full? That's right on the corner of Stevens Mill, and that's already, again, a very tricky intersection for those that travel it. And I would hate to see vehicular traffic start plugging up the breakdown lane right there.
I don't believe that it's posted no parking on either street, but I also believe that there hasn't really been any demand, so if that was a concern, you could consider a condition that says if, either that it be posted no parking, or that if people begin parking on the street, that the city should post it no parking. We certainly don't want parking on the street that close to that intersection, affecting site distance of that, that location. But I don't believe it's posted. I think there just hasn't been demand for it.
Okay, is the applicant here? Do we have the applicant? No.
I guess not.
Okay. All right, so at this point in time, then, no applicant. We just asked questions of staff, so I would entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, excellent. Do we have any members of the public that would like to come forward and talk to the board around this item? Again, five minutes. State your name and your address. Okay, so seeing no members of the public coming forward, I would entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Perfect. All those in favor? Great, all right. Any discussion?
I think this applicant had, in the past, done a really good job with revamping the building and putting in this business from what was previously there. I think it would be a good health option for local residents.
Yeah, I think my, really the only concern is what Tim and Dave were talking about. Tim's not kidding. That's, that's a rough intersection on a good day, so if people are parking along the road there, that's, it becomes almost impassable.
To scoot in and scoot out, kind of thing?
Well, to, to be on Stevens Mills Road and to cross Minutet Ave right there, uh, Court Street right there...
Or to even get on Court Street.
Right, is, is, can be really rough. Because you're fairly close to the intersection with Minutet, and people are coming down the hill, not paying attention to the speed limit, and people are coming off a traffic light, not paying attention to the speed limit, so.
Well, I can attest to the fact that I run that like five times a week, and I completely understand it, yep, on foot. No, it is a tricky intersection, for sure, yeah.
Do you think that it needs to be posted, or is, I think that particular spot, kind of, the physical geography of it makes it so people don't park on the, off the side of Court Street? It's not something that's, that's demanded for, but it also, I don't, you'd be pulling off onto a strip of grass to park.
I was thinking more along Riley's point, which is, are people gonna be like, "Oh, I can like quickly just grab a smoothie if the parking lot is full, and like park my car, put my hazards on, and run in." That, is that what you were thinking?
Well, I was thinking the reason that it doesn't happen is not because, I don't, I don't think people would be inclined to park there anyway, with like we're talking about the speed of traffic and the, just the physical geography of the, of the spot right in front of it. So pretty much I don't think we'd, my, it would be my opinion, I don't think we need to post no parking. I think it kind of lends itself to not being parked on.
If anything, I think people would park on Stevens Mill. Scoot over.
And it, it could be, if there's a concern, a condition that it be monitored for a period of time once they open as a takeout, and if parking happens, then it be posted.
Okay, excellent discussion. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve an outdoor walk-up window used at the existing business at 41 Stevens Mill Road, parcel ID 208-043 pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 13, Minutet Avenue, GB 2, Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 3, special exception, and Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, site plan review, subject to the following conditions: applicant must have available bathroom for customers, and no parking signs posted on Court Street in front of said establishment and on Stevens Mill Road beside said establishment.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have discussion? No discussion? I will seek a motion. All those in favor? Okay, excellent. Motion carries.
Who is the second on that?
Evan. Okay, item number six, same as before, right? It's a site plan review under special exception, and then a public hearing. John F. Murphy Holmes is proposing an eight-bed care home located off of Hotel Road. It's been a busy Hotel Stevens Mills day today. So I will hand it over to staff.
Thank you. The property is currently vacant, and is a mixture of field and woods with one small gravel pull-off adjacent to Hotel Road. That's what's currently there right now. Property boundaries are shown on the existing conditions plan, which is based on a survey completed by Mainland Consultants. The lot contains 12.63 acres and has about 331 feet of... The lot contains 12.63 acres and has about 331 feet of frontage along Hotel Road, and the lot also has about 1,425 feet frontage along Taylor Brook. The existing condition plan also shows map wetland areas, the hundred-year floodplain areas on the property, and the location of the Resource Protection Shoreland Overlay District as depicted on the City of Auburn zoning map. City of Auburn sewer runs through the property along Taylor Brook, being an easement, and a central main power easement runs across the eastern portion of the property. These utilities are shown on the existing conditions plan and site plan. The facility will operate 24 hours per day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. This is done in three shifts with a maximum number of seven employees on duty between 6:00 AM and 1:00 PM. The second shift with six employees begins at 1:00 PM and the third shift begins at 9:00 PM with only two employees, employees on duty. A minimum of 13 spaces are required to accommodate employees during the first and second shift changes each day with 19 spaces provided. There will be six spaces remaining for the visitor parking with, with only 13 employees entering, exiting the site during the shift change at 1:00 PM equal to 13 one-way trips and maximum number of, of per hour trips for the site, so there, there's no requirement for any kind of traffic movement permit. Project will not exceed the 100-vehicle traffic generation and, and would not require a traffic movement permit from MDOT. Site distance was measured at the proposed site driveway of 600 feet looking north and 1,000 feet looking south. These, these requirements exceed the ordinance requirement of 350 feet. Therefore, the driveway location proposed has sufficient site distance and will operate safely for the proposed use. In the proposed conditions, total non-vegetated impervious area totals 49,658 square feet or just over an acre. And total developed area will be about 2.81 acres. Stormwater improvements include a roof drip line filter around the building, two grass underdrain soil filter ponds, a bioretention filter, which is rain garden. Mainland has prepared a stormwater quality analysis, erosion control narrative, and have provided plans with details showing how these improvements meet the requirements of local and state stormwater rules under site law, stormwater law. City engineering staff has reviewed and approved the stormwater plans under our delegated review from Maine DEP. Public sewer and water utilities will be utilized by this development. The sewer service will leave the east side of the building and connect to the existing public sewer main, which runs across the property along Taylor Brook. The water service for domestic use in the building sprinkler system will be extended along the proposed driveway from the existing water main and on, on Hotel Road. And then additional power and communications will be extended from Hotel Road overhead to a new pole on the property and then underground along the proposed driveway to reach the building. New propane tanks and generator are proposed for this building as well. Staff suggests the planning board approve the John F. Murphy Homes, the Taylor Brook House, site plan for the proposed eight-bed care home located off Hotel Road, parcel ID 237-070-001 pursuant to the chapters required under the suburban residential district and site plan review, special exception in the Shoreland Overlay District. We do have one condition, that no development activity until any bonding or inspection fees are determined by the Auburn Engineering Department. With that, any, any questions from the board?
Any questions?
It's hard for me to decipher from the maps, but do we have a general idea of how far from Rubelite Lane in that condo complex to the parking area of this proposal? What kind of distance we're looking at for those that live in Rubelite Lane?
This gives you a good sense. You can see this corner, this property line corner in relation to the parking lot as That property corner is here. So to the property line, 300 plus feet to actual buildings, 350 plus.
Thank you, Eric.
Any other questions for staff?
I'm trying to find it here. I am not seeing the vegetative, or the, the plan for plantings.
Landscape plan, okay.
Have it here. It looks like it's the one after the, the regular site plan.
What sheet number is that landscaping plan? C2?
I guess this is, this is like a, actually, I mean, it's partially wooded lot, but it's a, it's a really big sort of open field. And I'm not really seeing a ton of, I'm not seeing a ton of screening, so could staff walk me through, staff believes that they've, they've met the requirements, so can staff walk me through where they believe the, the, the buffering is, like currently exists that won't be touched and left?
Yeah, I, I, we could ask the applicant to, to elaborate a little bit more on that as well, but it, you know, from our initial look-through, we had over 300 feet surrounding the, the site. And that, that in itself, we thought was adequate for, for buffering. They do anticipate doing some plantings around the immediate area, but the, just the natural cover and the wetlands, they're certainly not going to be impacting any of those wetlands that are around the site. And that's really the controlling factor for, for the existing buffer. There was, during my site visit, I saw a lot of standing red maple, which is a, essentially a facultative species for wetlands. I saw a lot of that standing and as, adding as that buffer for that particular site.
So essentially you're saying, so I, I'm looking, so behind the house, we're seeing these trees. I'm seeing those on the plan as well. To the north, we're seeing trees, yes?
Yes.
But, but there's, but there's, there's no, there's no screening to the, to the west or northwest at all?
And along the access drive, I guess, to that immediate foremost.
Yeah, there's, so there's a, there's a wetland that wraps around, there's, there's trees and everything, and the, based on the elevation, it looked like it was going to sit down off the road. I guess, you know, we could ask the applicant how that finished floor elevation is going to be in relation to the road, if there's going to be a visual there. I, I didn't take that into consideration, but from my site visit, it looked like there was a lot of vegetated cover and it looked like it was going to be undisturbed. A lot of that's protected under the Natural Resources Protection Act. I didn't expect them to be disturbing any of that. I, in, in the, in my interpretation of the wetlands, those are wetlands associated with the brook, so they're high-functioning, high-value wetlands, and, you know, again, that added to that thought process too, as I did my site walkthrough.
The idea being that you wouldn't want to encroach upon the wetlands in order to put buffers. So are we being asked to grant a waiver for that buffering because of that? Like, I just didn't see that. Because I didn't see that waiver, a request for a waiver, I assumed that there would be like a full buffering and then...
I, I think that those wetlands are providing a wooded buffer to most of the site, but I think as you pointed out on the western side, along the entrance road and on the front here, we're lacking some buffering potentially.
We could certainly add that to a condition of the approval to add a little bit more buffering there. Or we could ask the, the consultant to, you know, maybe, maybe we're not seeing exactly what, what they were thinking, and they could elaborate on that as well.
Yeah, I think it'll be good to hear from the applicant, yeah.
Could staff share what other businesses or commercial activity there is in this neighborhood? Because from what I can tell, this is pretty much a residential area.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much a, a residential area. This will be functioning as a residential home essentially for these folks under, you know, just basically under one roof. It, it is allowed use in the, in the zone.
But as for those who drive by or live there, they don't necessarily see houses. This would be a commercial property. Are there any other commercial properties within the vicinity?
I, I can't think of any along that stretch of Hotel Road, but residential care facilities are one of the uses that's allowed in most of our residential zones.
Okay, thank you.
On, on C2 dot 2, there's reference to a resource protection zone that kind of cuts east-west across the property, and I notice that part of the building goes past that resource protection zone. Can you explain what that zone is and do we need, it doesn't seem that the building cares about the protective zone?
So that's the 250-foot setback from the shoreline zone. You could have, you can have development between the 250 and the 75-foot setback from that stream. It does typically require in that area potentially to have a permit by rule disturbance adjacent to a natural resource. That is something that I'm not 100% sure that I saw in the application.
Yeah, and we, we do go over that with the applicant. As John said, you can have some development within the resource protection zone. The goal is to minimize that. We looked at options to fit the footprint on this site. That would have reduced the amount of the, it's a small amount of the building relatively as well as the circulation that extends into the resource protection zone, but really the only other areas to do it would have had impacts on wetlands. And their design decision was to minimize the impact on wetlands first and then also to minimize the impact on the resource protection. But extending into those areas is allowed and it does keep the, the building and the pavement from impacting actual wetlands.
Yeah, so I guess I'm, so the, the area to the southeast is also a wetland area? Like, you couldn't slide it into that area a little bit?
And you, you could. I think that's one of the options they considered, but it would impact more wetlands than the, the way that it's laid out currently.
Okay, so that, that's wetlands in that area?
Yep, all of this area that has the, the little kind of shrub icons is.
Excellent, thank you.
Would this change the plowing priority for this area, having this residence there?
No, no single development would, would change that priority.
I didn't know if, given the fact of its nature and potential emergency vehicle necessities, that would change plowing priorities or things like that?
I think Hotel Road is a, I don't know if it's a one or a two, it's a fairly high priority on Hotel Road, but we could double-check which priority area it is. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't change because of this development.
All right, so do you want, is applicant here?
I could just note that I know that they do coordinate plowing with emergency response, so if there's an ambulance going out and they fear that the roads are in poor condition, they will plow ahead of an emergency response.
Thank you, Eric.
Good evening. My name is Mike Goddard. I think you've seen me before. With me tonight is Todd Goodwin, who is the Executive Director for John F. Murphy Homes, and Esther Bizier is sitting over there, and she's a design engineer for me. I'm here tonight to represent John F. Murphy Homes and, genuinely, genuinely, who's going to build this facility for them if we get tools and budgets work. I just wanted to point out that we did several schematics of this and talked to staff several times about the best way to let this out, but we also did an extensive architectural review of the internal layout for the residence. There are eight beds here. We're looking to move folks from Lewiston over to this facility. All those folks currently are wheelchair-bound. And what we're trying to do is give them individual bedroom areas, bathroom areas, and areas to sit out in front of their bedrooms. These two wings are the bedroom wings, and along here and along there, there's like an indoor porch for these folks to be able to sit. They don't have anything like that in the facility they're in in Lewiston right now. So we're trying to give this facility that care. The wetland boundary with the hatchback up here, and there's an upland area that goes up around where the wing of this building went, and then also wetland come around. You can see the tree lines that we're, we're cutting. There was a tree line that comes out a little bit in here. We got tree lines over here that we're cutting a little bit off so that we get the grading in for the stormwater ponds and other things. This is, sets up on a knob. If you drive by there, look back at the back of the field, there's a knob where 200, quote me, I think it's 240 feet or something like that off the road, 83 feet from the, to the building, from the property corner. 83 feet from here to the building, 240 something feet in off the road. I didn't consider it a commercial activity. This is a residence. There are care folks there to take care of these residents, like we said in the thing at 7 during the daytime, 6 in the evening, and then 2 overnight. So again, we put some buffering on it. We have a grown-up field, which we intend to mow where there's not wetlands, so that we have walking paths so that taking fun with the wheelchairs and sit in a setting area over here or whatever they want to do, so they can have some outdoor activity. They like to see the traffic, these, these folks. They could have special needs, autism and other, I won't go into the detail, but that's generally what we've talked about. So they like to see the traffic, and this is home for their end of life. That's, that's what this facility is about. So I think we talked a little bit about screening and I didn't know and we hadn't talked about buffering other than what we've shown on the plane. So if you have more questions, one of us can try to answer it.
So all these residents would be wheelchair-bound?
All of the current patients are wheelchair-bound. The facility would accept, you know, once one passes, other folks could come in that would not be wheelchair-bound and may do the walking pass and may walk around. It's currently the ones we're trying to move into a, a real facility that we're trying to fit in here now. They're all wheelchair-bound.
I would just be concerned that they would potentially venture their way, venture their way into the wetland areas. I do think it's good that they are able to be outside and enjoy the rural aspect of that area.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be outside without staff with them. The, the folks are not going to be wandering without staff with them. The, the folks are not going to be wandering without staff with them. There's seven folks on staff with eight patients during the day. So, at night, they're typically sleeping, so it's less of a thing. So, it's, it's most, most likely that one person might be out there with two, or they might be, um, you know, uh, one person, two or three. But these folks are going to be watched 24/7. They're not, they're not independent. They need help.
Any other questions? All right, so seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open the public comment.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, so, um, if we have members of the public that would come, like to come forward, uh, please state your name and your address, and you have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Chairman, uh, members of the board. My name is Maureen Hopkins. I live at 16 Topaz Circle in Granite Mill Estates. This proposed development is located in the suburban residential district. The stated purpose for this district is to provide for, protect, and stabilize low-density suburban residential areas in their adjunct public and institutional uses. It is designed to ensure an open character of development through its lot size requirements and through permitting of certain uses rural in nature that are compatible with residential uses. The planning staff in their report notes that the proposed facility will operate 24 hours per day, seven days per week, 365 days per year. This is a business that will come with lights, movements of vehicles, and people and the associated noise 24 hours per day, seven days per week, 365 days per year. You can call this a residence, but this is a business. Allowing a 24/7, 365 business adjacent to residences defeats the purpose of the City of Auburn zoning for the suburban residential district. This use is neither rural in nature nor compatible with residential uses. Rather, it will be a 24-hour nuisance to residents who live just a few hundred feet from this business. And as Mr. Seer pointed out, there's very little of any screening between the facility and the backside of the condominiums located on Lepidolite. You don't need an extensive study to see that. You have Google Earth, you can see that there's no screening. Pursuant to Section 60-1336A4 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Auburn, in order to approve a special exception, the planning board must find that the exception sought will not alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood and will not tend to depreciate the value of the property adjoining the neighborhood property under application. I don't believe the planning board can find that a 24/7 business operation will not alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood and will not depreciate the value of our property in Granite Mill Estates. Section 60-1336B of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Auburn requires that as part of granting a special exception, the board shall show by written statements filed in its record of such application and by a statement in the minutes of the board, how the special exception sought fulfills the foregoing conditions. As such, I would ask that the planning board, please state for the record what evidence they have that the proposed development will not alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood and how it will not depreciate the value of the adjoining properties. Thank you.
Thank you, any other members?
Hi, I'm Ryan Smith, I live at 14 Weaver Street. I actually just wanted to come up and speak about a state statute about intermediate care facilities with eight or fewer persons. So when you go to Title 30A, Chapter 187, Paragraph 4357A, states that all community living arrangements with eight or fewer persons, if it's licensed by the state, is considered a single-family use for zoning purposes. So I did look through the suburban residential, uh, chapter of our zoning ordinance, and it doesn't say this is allowed, but I actually don't even think this is a special exception because it has to be considered a single-family use per, per state statute. With that said, I, I do have, I mean, I wasn't even planning on speaking on any of this, so I didn't study up on anything. Um, but the shoreline zoning part of this is concerning, but if the research has been done, it's been done. But I do see the entrance here is right beside the residence next door. I would have the same concerns about buffering and then proximity of that entrance. If we could possibly move that down the road, uh, up to the planning board, obviously, but that'd be my only concerns with the site plan review. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Mary Booth, I live at 32 Lepidolite Court in Granite Mills. And, um, on one of your air, uh, air photos that you had there, I could show you how close my condo is to this development that I just bought in December. And I do pay a lot of taxes to the City of Auburn. Um, I bought the condo knowing there was a chance of development there, um, but I thought it was residential. And so, I understand this is a residential home for these folks, but the fact remains that there's going to be a parking lot, a fairly large parking lot, that will have lighting 24/7, and that's something I'm going to be looking out at. And that is going to negatively impact, um, my property, property values, especially since that field is, you know, no matter how much I heard them say there's, uh, trees there, you just have to go look, there's nothing between, um, our condos and where they're proposing this development. So I would want to know what kind of accommodations is going to be made um, for light pollution and other things like that. Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Leveque, I live at 50 Rubelite Lane in Auburn. I too, as this woman said, about the property that you're proposing. And, first of all, I was a little concerned because we just received a letter on this public hearing, um, approximately two weeks or so ago. Had no clue whatsoever as to what was going on with this property. I have no idea why the residence of Granite Mills has not received prior notification before this. Um, and we've got some other people that live in the, um, area as well. I know one of the letters, I looked up on one of the websites today, it, uh, is indicating that construction is expected to begin in May for occupancy in May of 2024. So it looks like this is projected to start construction next month. My concern, as well as hers, is light pollution. Um, I'm also concerned about groundwater issues. Our unit has had water in our basement, which we've had to have mitigated. Um, other adjoining properties, my neighbors next to me have had a concern with water. I know several of the units have, and there's some of our units in there who have to be on sump pumps. So my concern is, is when this construction does start, uh, what does that do? I know there are wetlands in around there and, uh, obviously, I'm not an expert at any of this, but we do have concerns about, is this going to possibly aggravate some of the water issues that people have had before? I do have a neighbor who abuts Taylor River and, um, has noticed that it appears that the river has been a lot higher since the bridge construction was done this past year. We're not sure if that has any relevance or not, but there are some concerns about that. I guess the other issue, this is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365. It was mentioned there's only two staff persons at night. I'm assuming that this would be in a lockdown facility, being that some of these people have autism and other disabilities. So my concern is security for the individuals in the property. And as the other lady said, how is this going to affect the values of our properties? We just had a, quite a substantial increase in our taxes this past year. I personally pay over $6,000, um, which is a hardship. My husband and I are both retired, um, and so I do have a concern how this is going to also affect my property value. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to come forward and address the board? Okay, seeing none, I would, um, entertain a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, so I know that we heard some questions, some comments. I will, and we can have, address the questions that came before us with the help of staff. Oh, sure.
Would it be okay if we make a couple more comments? Mr. Goodwin would like to give a little more information on the program for you.
I would defer to staff on that, from a procedural standpoint.
I think if the board wants to hear about how the program addresses some of those concerns, um, as long as you decide to do that, you're certainly able to.
What is the board, how does the board feel? Why don't we do this? Why don't we, um, go through our questions? If that comes up, then absolutely you can help support that. Sound good? Perfect. Right.
Uh, staff, could you clarify? I think I know the answer, but the, uh, Taylor Brook depth is controlled by Kendall Dam for the most part, or whatever naturally occurring beaver dams may occur. Is that accurate?
That's, that's my understanding, yeah. Is that, uh, sometimes beaver dams, I think, maybe have even more influence on the upper part of it near this site.
And secondly, um, do we have an estimate of the tax contribution this development would have with the city?
I don't have, um, an assessment. We can check the application though while you're, while you're working through these to see if we have an approximate construction value and could give you a ballpark based on that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, I guess my question to that would be, is that relevant to the approval of this?
It, it certainly doesn't address or fail to address any of the conditions that you have to review it.
Okay. Would this affect any depreciation of surrounding, uh, homes?
It's, it's considered a residential home, or, um, you know, though it's multifamily, um, it is essentially a residential home. It shouldn't depreciate any of the surrounding values. From an assessor's standpoint, certainly not from the city's standpoint. As what the market will provide, that, you know, time will tell on that, but it, it hasn't been our experience, something like this depreciates real estate around the area.
And this is a state zoning, not a city zoning?
Uh, no, this is city zoning, uh, suburban residential. This, this particular use is allowed. There was a reference to a state statute, um, that, you know, um, I, this, this, the city's staff, we didn't look at that state statute in particular. We looked at the ordinances that we had here, um, and it certainly meets, on the suburban residential, it certainly meets this use. The, the key here is the, the eight-bed, uh, you know, anything beyond that would not be allowed.
And I actually have a follow-up question to that because we, we've already done this, uh, or, no, we've done this, we've seen something similar somewhere else. And that was on, is it Turner or Summer? Summer. So, uh, I know that Eric was on staff at the time, I was on the planning board at the time. Uh, that was a concern. Did the city assessor's office, uh, cue, uh, the planning department into any negative effects that, that that residential facility had on, uh, the surrounding residential area?
I'm not aware of any. Um, I think it is, uh, true that the state law says that, um, single-family settings for eight or fewer residents are still considered to be single-family homes. Um, I think this line is blurred a little bit, but we still allow for this type of use in this zoning district.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying more to get at, there was a specific, there, there were multiple questions about whether or not this would affect people's property values, but we have this exact situation. We've, we've had this exact situation within the last, I want to say it was within six years perhaps. Um, and, and I guess I don't recall that having a negative impact on the assessed values or the resale values of those homes that were adjacent to that.
I haven't heard that it has had any impact on the value of surrounding properties. And if I could, um, address Tim DeRoche's question, it looks like, um, the construction value is around $5 million on the project. My guess is that it won't, wouldn't assess at that amount, but most of the Murphy Homes projects are tax-exempt. Then you could probably hear from the applicant to confirm if this facility would be eligible for, for a tax exemption. So although it would be new assessed value, it may not generate taxes.
Thank you, Eric.
I have a question about the lighting plan. We had some questions about the lights. Could, could you pull up the photometric plan, the E001? Only because it looks like my printout got cut off a little bit.
Think I may have passed it, I'll go.
Okay, so is that, that's not a cutoff. It just happens to look like a straight line at the bottom of that. That is the end of the, the measuring?
And I think we'll see that the numbers drop off to near.
See, it looks like it's a straight line across some of the numbers.
That's the way the plan's drawn, yeah. And it looks like we're at right around, uh, one all the way across, where they drop off, two in this area, point two rather.
And is there any way that you could guesstimate with an overlay of, of the distance between that and the, uh, the next, the abutting property? Are there budding buildings?
So if that, if the, uh, we use this corner as a reference to go back to the other plan, so we're a, a bit of a distance along that line. Had to estimate around a couple hundred feet.
Yeah, thank you.
And you can see that there is a wooded area, um, along that section here. There's much less as you move towards the front of the site, up into this area.
But just going back to that light plan, that, that, uh, shows where the light is visible from the parking lot. So, uh, that's, that's saying that that would, it would not be shining light, uh, on the, on the neighboring buildings.
There, there are cutoff fixtures as well, and yeah, it should be very minimal light, um, outside of that area. I'm sure if you look directly at a light from below, from the side, you'll be able to see it, but shouldn't be dispersing light across the line.
And the current farmhouse that's there is in between those condos and the new building going up.
Yeah, can you stop there, Eric? Quick. I, I think this might cover what Amanda may have been saying too. Dave and I like to point out that the light measurement numbers, that light is going right on that neighboring home. Are we reading that correctly?
Here.
Yes.
Yes, yep. Lower levels than you would have along the road, but it does look like there's some spill over there. I think there's certainly an opportunity for buffering to be required along that segment, mitigate that.
It would, would it, I mean, I noticed that it's on, the light post is on the right side, is putting it on the left side. side, is putting it on the left side, then decrease. I guess I'm curious as to whether or not that would, in addition to buffering, if just putting it on the other side of the road would actually.
They could ask, ask the applicant to address that question.
But I can say that when we looked at those lights, they were full cutoff lighting, but I don't think that they exceed the, the lighting requirements at that particular location. I'm not saying that there will be zero light at that location, but it didn't exceed what the city requirements were at that time.
We did say that if we had specific questions that the applicant could ask, that might, I, I think that would be a question that we would want the applicant to answer.
I believe that those numbers are point something. I believe that the minimum light number is one foot candle. So I believe those are numbers that are 0.4, 0.2, 0.1. And we can put a full cutoff so that it doesn't spill over the property line. We can put a full cutoff, a shield on the back of that light, so it doesn't spill over there. But again, I think it's a function of the CAD person who's running the numbers out. So again, you need one, one foot candle, as I understand it, to be able to see safely to get to a hot pot or something like that.
Staff typically, you know, we, that's what the ordinance reads. Typically, anything over 0.5, we would be asking for the full cutoff on the backside, so, I mean, that's just kind of a general rule of thumb that I do. But certainly, planning board could ask for more if they're, you know, concerned about any kind of light penetration for the neighbor, so.
And, and we don't need the lights in the middle of the night. They can be shut down at night. Once staff shift changes, lights can be shut down. Folks are sleeping inside, okay? So we're not, just like they want lights off at night, we don't need them as well outside.
So at the nine o'clock shift change, after 9:30, they would be, 9:15, they'd be shut off?
So, staff, that's something if we want to make sure happens, we would make a condition. Just, I'm saying that so members of the board understand that we could ask the staff to do that, or, I mean, we could ask applicant to do that, or we can make it a condition, make it a requirement, right, so.
Is that the only one you want to be making? You want to understand the program.
Yeah, I want to go back to the lighting, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, so I, I hear what you're saying in terms of, you know, shutting down at a certain period of time. Any, like, any adjustment to the lighting? Any thoughts around that?
Would they, they would be turned back on if there was emergency response that was called out?
To the lighting, could, could we put a condition that the light pole listed at 5A on this, on E001, just have a cutoff? Just make that a condition, and then there wouldn't be any light on the?
It is a full cutoff luminaire. We could add a shield if we need to, to get the light level down. What I'm trying to say to you is that, that light, 1.1, 1.1, okay, okay, yep. We can put a shield on, on it.
I guess we could, could a condition be that we put a shield on light labeled the
You said 5A.
Yeah, it's 5A, and it's E001's.
Is there a reason why those two lights are on that side of the entrance versus the other side?
I'm not a lighting engineer, okay? We had a lighting engineer do this design, and the most number of sheets that I've seen on lighting fixtures in an application for many, very long. So the engineer put them on that, on that side. We got power coming in on that side. That may be why that they did it. Again, we can make adjustments, but I, I already said, there's not a lot of light going on.
Sure. And, and just so, I just want to make sure, just to Evan's point, right? So from a condition, if we move forward with this motion, so I heard what you say, said Riley, and again, for whomever's, you know, entertaining this motion, we would have the shield at 5A to that light fixture. Would that also include the shutdown as well? Are those two different items that we're discussing?
Yeah, I was just, I was just posing the question. I'm not, I'm not even necessarily saying that's something we, we need to conclude. I'm just saying that's something that could be done to.
Mitigate the concern. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think requiring that they be shut off at a certain time of night mitigates not just that neighbor, but I think sort of the, the wider surrounding area, too, as well. I understand that these are full cutoff lights, and having seen what these lights are like over the years, I understand that they really do shine down, but as you look out, so, you know, I, where I'm standing is dark, but when I look over there, I am seeing a lighted area, and I, I can understand that. If we could avoid that, that would be preferable.
Absolutely.
And actually, shutting it off would be a simpler solution than trying to have one particular thing shielded, so.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Riley?
Having a shut-off time for the lights would be a lot simpler of a solution than pointing out one thing they have to add a shield to.
Than the shield?
We, we did hear about the entrance location. It is fairly close to that house. And looking at it, though, to me, it appears like that's the only place to put the location without impacting wetlands, so. Like, I kind of recognize the, the reason for citing it there, but I am going to go back to my visual buffering piece, in that I can see from the, I can see from Plan C22 where there are trees, but I can also see where there, there aren't currently natural visual buffers. And so I think it would be important to fill those gaps, particularly, and so that they're not encroaching along the wetlands, but along the southerly line of the parking lot, there's a gap with trees, and then along the southerly line of the entrance, and then I assume we would want some screening along the, the westerly side somewhere, but its location is not as obvious. I think at the road itself provides the best location to avoid encroaching on wetlands or disturbing wetlands, but.
I agree, Evan, with regard to the, the need for additional buffers, for me to be comfortable with it.
And I guess since the, the buffering concern is really visual, my assumption would be a commercial-style buffer of evergreens, some sort of arborvit-y type, just in, in a staggered row, sort of, what do we do? Staggered row, six feet apart, kind of deal, six-footed planting, I think, something like that?
That would be a typical buffer, staggered row, six to eight feet apart, so that they grow, sort of grow into each other visually, provide that. And that would be very typical of a more commercial use, but it would certainly provide buffering for this use as well.
All right, so any, so before we go into discussion around the, the site plan per se, any other questions from the public that we want to address?
Oh, there was a notification question. Did you, the public notification was sent out with the required time?
Yes, it was sent out on time, and it sounds like the resident had said she received it about two weeks ago, which is recent.
And who receives the notice?
Individual property owners within 500 feet of the development.
So it could stand to reason, even though you might live on the same street, if you're outside that radius, who may not have received it?
Correct. Yeah, we would pick up the individual unit ownership.
Okay. Any other questions before we move into discussion? Okay, perfect, great. All right, so you've kind of blended it a little bit, right, but, which was good. So to that end, and I'll just, I'll start it by saying I agree with the buffering and the screening, so if we were to move forward with a motion, I would like to see as a point of condition, buffering and screening. And then also as well, I am agreeing with the, the lights as well, so putting a condition to mitigate any light pollution as well. So that's my, my two cents.
I agree. How specific do we have to be in our motion on screening, like, descriptive-wise?
It's a great question.
Yeah, as descriptive as we want, so that we can make staff understand exactly what it is that we want.
We want to make sure we know what you want, so we get it right.
So if we simply said screening, that wouldn't work, but then, for instance, to say screening along the southern boundary of the parking lot, there's only one parking lot, that's a very obvious location on the map, right? So if there's like someplace you think it should go, then it's best to describe it for staff.
As well as the, you had referenced the commercial-type buffering, it, how do we incorporate that concept?
You just describe it, two staggered rows of evergreens spaced six foot apart, and then oftentimes you'll say, you know, six, at, at a minimum height of six-footed planting, something like that, is, or you could say four-foot, or whatever it is, but usually you'll define, unless you don't care, and then, you know, the, the developer might go, well, you know, I'm going to put in two-foot ones, knowing that in three years, they're going to be eight feet, kind of deal, based on what they are. So that, that depends.
There's, there's only one concern I have on the, on the suggestion. There's a ditch along that side, and to do the staggered as you speak, it would be difficult to exact, install it that way. So I just, I kind of want to bring that to you guys' attention on that road entrance. I, I understand there should be a buffer there, completely agree, but with the ditching there, it's going to be difficult to put trees in that particular location. I think we get a, a nice row on the top, but it'd be hard to stagger that exactly what, how you're asking.
Are you talking about along the road, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Along the road.
So I think what I heard you say, Evan, was screening along the southern boundary of the parking. Sounds like we could say something like screening to also include, you said, just a standard line, depending upon topography? Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the cleaner, the cleanest way to do it is going to, to say the, the visual screening buffering of, you know, the two staggered rows of evergreens spaced six foot apart, whatever height of planting, in these areas, and a single row of evergreens planted. Since it's a single row, I, I think you go more like a three or four-foot, with a three or four-foot distance between, along the, along Hotel Road. So that way, we're, we're able to put it there with the site constraints.
Yeah, I think that's where, that gives staff and the consultants some flexibility in, in getting this right, so just, yep.
I'm afraid I might be the thorn in this whole thing. I'm all for Auburn's growth, totally. For me, I don't see a lot of things coming together smoothly for this project. We're discussing a project that's going in a wetland-centric area that is already presenting issues along those lines. We're looking at a plan where we're already stumbling into, like Mr. Blay brought up, ditches and things like that for buffering with neighbors. We have light pollution concerns. Yes, legally, it's defined as a single residence, but to those that live around it and drive by it, they see something else. I'm not sure that this location is the right location for this facility, for those reasons and others. For eight beds of people whom are already housed, I'm just, this is a hard pill for me to swallow personally.
I will say that I actually agree that I don't like this. I actually don't like this project. However, I also recognize that they've met all the parameters, or I can add my conditions for buffering for those parameters I feel they haven't met, so. I, I like, and let me rephrase that. I like the project itself. It's the sighting, like where it is that, that.
Agreed, I agree with that. I like the project. For me, it's the location.
But I don't see a metric to say that they're not meeting, that, that they're not, that they're not meeting the standards.
So there'd have to be a finding of fact where they haven't met the standards, and if you found that finding of fact, is there a condition that you could put forth that would solve for that? And I think that's what Evan's trying to take care of, and that's what Riley's trying to take care of.
I could speak to the points the gentleman brought up, or I could pull his name up, where we need to cite specific examples of special exemptions with watershed, wetlands, things like that. I'm just really having a hard time seeing this be cut and dry and clean for a number of reasons. Again, I think it's a great project, probably for, for reasons I might not be able to successfully articulate. I just don't think this is the right location. That's really all I can say.
Do you have something, Riley? Okay, so this is all good discussion, so either we continue with the discussion, or I would seek a motion.
Just another question for the board. The buffering that you would be looking for is to the south side of the parking lot, a single row along the road. Was there any, to the, any, just any desire to have any on the north side of the building?
I would think we'd all, the, the access road certainly is, as well.
Yeah, I would say along the boundary line of the access road, yeah.
But there's no, no, no screening to the north, any to the north side of the building?
That's all wooded and wetlands, isn't it?
So, can I ask staff a question? So clearly, we're kind of bumping up against the buffering. Is there an opportunity for us to, again, from a procedural standpoint, pause and see if the applicant can come up with a solutionable buffering screening that they could bring forth to us, and we can review? Or are we going to?
Yeah, we could table it and say we're tabling it because you have the following questions, and we're giving the applicant time to address it.
So that would be a motion to table to a date certain?
I think that, or you could prescribe a buffer, and if that wasn't acceptable, then they could bring something back to you, too, either way.
Just trying to give some ideas for the board.
I actually think allowing them to come up with a buffering plan would be probably the most useful way to go about it.
I'd prefer that.
I make a motion to table this public hearing to a date certain being our next planning board meeting, to allow the applicant and developer to address concerns regarding buffering on the site.
Second.
Discussion?
Just for clarification, that would be the May 9th, 6:00 PM, planning board meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Does that work for staff? I guess I should ask that first, but.
Sure.
Okay. All right, discussion? All right, discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, we've got one opposed and six in favor. Motion carries. All right, so the next item on the agenda is public comment, so I will, um, entertain a motion to open up, um, public comment.
So moved.
What, I don't, what? Is this what? Oh, it's on the agenda. Oh, okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Seeing none, uh, we will go on to the next agenda item, which is miscellaneous, so, um, I know we've had some things come before us, so anything new that we are not aware of, we definitely would be willing to hear about. Um, if it's passed before us already, I'm sure we've heard about it, and we're up to speed.
Just a reminder that we do need to review the board's policies and procedures. Um, we do have draft comments back from the city attorney. We'll get those out to you.
Okay.
And if time permits for the May meeting, hopefully we'll be able to address that.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous com, uh, miscellaneous items? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?